Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Will you please join me in the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I should be very proud of which is standing on the nation's behalf.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, the November nineteenth, West Fargo City Commission Meeting. The first order of business will be to approve the order of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve?
Is there a second? Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. I'll make a notation that on the consent agenda, there will be one item added, and that is a raffle for ducks unlimited to be held at the Speedway for wildlife conservation. Hope you'd add that to it. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes from November fifth. They have been distributed. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Move the approve? Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Been moved, seconded by Commissioner Jurdavich. Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the November fifth meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is building permits. They have been distributed also for your review. It's your pleasure.
I move the approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Jurdavich. Been moved and seconded to approve the building permits report. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the next order of business is the consent agenda. It's to schedule a 5:30 PM public hearing on the rezoning of Eaglewood Seventh Edition on Monday, December third, two thousand and eighteen. And the other one, which I added earlier, is the raffle for ducks unlimited at the Speedway, wildlife conservation.
Make a motion to approve?
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Simmons? Been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Thorstedt. Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on into the regular agenda. The first order of business was for a public hearing. It's scheduled at six PM. That's the way it was advertised in the newspaper, so we'll be moving on to item number two, and we'll come back to the public hearing, item number one, at six PM. Number two is the first reading of ordinance number eleven thirty-three, Regulation of Compression and Engine Braking. Mr. Shockley.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the West Fargo Commission. Before you have the first reading of an ordinance to create a prohibition against the use of engine brakes or jake brakes, as they're known, it would be a prohibition throughout the city of West Fargo. I believe this was generated out of a request of a resident, and then also a review, just an overall review of the issue. I can only speculate why it hadn't been addressed previously, other than, over the years, we've grown so quickly from sort of a small town into a larger town, I don't think it was as big of a deal, but now with all the residential areas, I think there's probably more of a desire not to have the use of engine brakes within the city. Can certainly answer any questions. It's pretty straightforward. It just prohibits the use of engine brakes within the city of West Fargo.
And this is just the first reading? This is not an action item? Is that correct, John?
Correct.
Thank you. Commissioners? Any questions?
Will there be signage? Will there be signage around the city and all that for that?
Yes, you would need, the city would need to establish signage before we could start enforcing it, so we'd want to put signage prohibiting the use of engine brakes at all the major entrances into the city. So on Main, the interstate, Cheyenne, is it so?
John, do you know how far the one on the interstate goes out? Does it go through us for the break?
Yeah.
The one in Fargo, does it go all the way through and out to, as of now, already?
You know what? It goes up to our border, so...
If you're coming from the east, going west, it stops before you get to that exit, well, it's at Veterans Center or whatever you want.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Shockley? All right. Thank you, Mr. Shockley.
We'll need a motion for first reading?
Only a motion. Commissioner Simmons makes the motion to approve the first reading of ordinance eleven thirty-three, Regulation of Compression and Engine Braking. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Olson. Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Next order of business is code enforcement, emergency preparedness, quarterly report. Pierre Freeman. Mr. Freeman.
Good evening, President Commissioners. Thank you for letting me have the time to come up here and speak to you guys today. My name is Pierre Freeman. I am your code enforcement officer, as well as your emergency preparedness coordinator, and I handed out the quarterly report, or semi-annual report, to you guys earlier, so you should have that. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me at this time as well. Like to say, first of all, I'll tell you what I do, what my job is, what my responsibilities are, and then also my staff that's here with me tonight. So, my name is Pierre Freeman. Like I said, I'm your code enforcement officer, emergency preparedness coordinator. I have one staff member who is Kimberly Shopper. She is our environmental specialist. She works mainly on code enforcement aspects of my responsibilities, or the responsibilities under those two areas. So, code enforcement is what I call the slow laws. Slow laws are the ones that aren't traffic and aren't criminal. So, we handle all the nuisance laws. We have some of the planning zoning laws. Anything that requires us to write a letter, give them time to correct things, and then to move on from there. We do not handle traffic. We do not handle criminal. I leave that to these guys over here with the guns and badges. We don't have arrest powers or anything like that, so it's not something that we address. The other departments that we deal with are planning zoning. We deal with public works. We deal with building inspections. We deal with economic development lightly, assessors, and the engineering departments as well. We also address, under the code enforcement, industrial pretreatment, so anything that goes into the sewers that shouldn't be going to the sewers, that's what we deal with. If they're dumping major amounts that are going to impact our lagoons, impact our sewer systems, that's what we also monitor. Terry Rust, if you remember before, he used to do that, and now part of his task has been put under the code enforcement and under our responsibilities. We use MyGov, its software system to help track all of our cases. We can put pictures. We put our notes. We put the letters in there. It auto-generated the letters based on the information that we put in there. It's a really slick system. It saves us a lot of time. I'm very happy to have it. I'm the major user of MyGov. We're the only ones that use it. We've modified it so it can handle anything from our property maintenance codes to nuisance codes, trees, diseased trees, nuisance like the tall grass and weeds, to junk and everything else. We have specific letters for all those things that reference this to the ordinance and so forth. Future programs that we are going to be involved with and start implementing that are already in the ordinances are like a fog program, which is our fats, oils, and grease. It's all under the sewer ordinances already. It's there. It's not something that we have to write a new ordinance on. You're not supposed to dump anything down those drains. We already require grease traps in restaurants that are generating a lot of grease and oils, fats and grease, and they're supposed to be cleaning those out before they get too clogged or whatever and start coming down our sewer systems, which causes us to have to clean our systems, and also wears them out quicker. The other program that we are looking to implement in full is rental housing. It's already under the International Property Maintenance Code. We have that under the building code. We just don't apply it to residential houses because we sort of figure your house is your home, it's your kingdom. We want to apply it, as it should be, to rental houses or to places that are being provided by somebody else. So, if you're renting a place, you should be providing a healthy home and so forth, safe home, with proper stairs, railings, and all that other stuff. That's what's underneath the Property Maintenance Code. The other aspect of my job is emergency management, and for that, it's just myself right now. I don't look to anybody else to help with that at this point. My focus is the EOC, which is Emergency Operations Center, is all of our planning. So, anything that's the THIRAs, the Emergency Operations Plans, the mitigation plans, anything else like that. And I'm also the conduit or coordinator between the city, the county, the state, fed, anything else. So, I'm keeping all of that in order to make sure that we're doing the right things. Planning is a huge part of emergency management. We've completed a THIRA, which is a Threats, Hazards, and Risk Assessment, and that is the basis of all the rest of our planning. We are doing COOP planning right now, which is Continuity of Operations, Continuity of Government, and we started to reach out to some departments already to look at facilities, succession planning, and so forth. We have our EOP, which was last drafted in two thousand and twelve. It is in dire need of being redrafted, but I can't do that until I finish a few other pieces, gather that other information so that we can put it all together. I'm also waiting for the city of Fargo and the Cass County to put their drafts together because I want to have the same structure so that if we look at their plan, they look at our plan. As we start coordinating more, we all have the same structure and the same issues. We are going to be bumping certain parts of our plan up to the county. We do not do public health. It's not going to be part of our plan, so I want to make sure that their plan is referenced properly. We have a training exercise plan as well as a mitigation planning. County's going through mitigation planning currently, and so we're doing it at a local level, as well as kicking our projects of what we want to see in the county's plan too, for West Fargo specifically. And the last plan, like I said, is the training and exercise plan, which leads me to my last point, which is, we do exercises. We did one this summer in August, which was the active shooter. We coordinate with the police, fire to deal with that. We try and get some grant monies. Cass County got a huge grant to do active shooter exercises this year, so we're putting together three active shooter exercises throughout the county. One in West Fargo, one in Fargo, and one in the rural areas potentially. And that planning and exercise pieces never stops. As we plan, we exercise, redraft, re-exercise, replan, and so forth. It just keeps going around in circles to make sure that we keep up with current knowledge, current aspects, current tactics for PD, fire, public works, and so forth. Outside of that, if you have any questions, I'd love to hear any comments or thoughts from you guys.
Any questions of Mr. Freeman?
Just a question, Pierre. Are your listed complaints you had handled, are those all complaint-driven? In other words, does someone have to say, that grass over there is getting too long, or are we proactive on them, or are we reactive, as much as it comes from a citizen's complaint?
Right. So, there's a few things that we're proactive about. If it's our boulevards or our property, I don't have to wait for complaint because we would be the complainant. It's our property that they're damaging, the city's property, so we can take action. If it's anything else that's not our property, if it's someone complaining about a neighbor's grass is too long, we have to wait for complaint. That's been how we've started. That's the standard right now. So, if it's tall grass, junk, weeds, dog, excessive dog waste, things like that, we wait for complaint.
So, if somebody, a city employee on a sanitation truck was driving around and saw something, should they report that to you, or just wait for a citizen's complaint?
We wait for citizens' complaints. We don't direct our staff to do that because, as I said, if I drove around a neighborhood, I'd never get out of the neighborhood because I, knowing the ordinances, I could probably stay there and write up a ton of things. We don't want to be that nitpicky, so there's kind of a balance in that, knowing the community what's going to get cleaned up, what's not, what looks like someone's just faking for two weeks on vacation versus what it normally looks like. We also have door hangers, to kind of answer your question about complaints too. If we see something in one area, and we go to the next door, and the same guy's got the same issue, but we only have a complaint about this address, try and hang door hangers at a few houses nearby, so everybody kind of gets the word that the tall grass is an issue and that it needs to be addressed, but it's not a notice of violation. I just consider it a courtesy, friendly reminder, as we say. We do those for snow, for junk, and for tall trees, for tall limbs of trees that are over sidewalks and things like that. We have quite a few door hangers that we produce to sort of ease that and still get the word out. We're somewhat proactive, but yet we still stay compliant.
Do we also have any questions?
Having participated in the active shooter demonstration that all of the local law enforcement and fire departments and, you know, emergency services did, it was a great demonstration of what the resources are for our community coming together to deal with a situation like that. And I found it very interesting when they had to do briefing about how they could improve on it, how the law enforcement, fire department, emergency services were extremely vigilant. I don't want to use the word critical of themselves, of what they could do better, but there's no question about that, that there, you know, should that unforeseen terrible circumstance happen, that Mr. Freeman's leadership and that of all of our department heads have do a great job. So, thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Awesome. Thank you. Have a good evening. The next order of business is number four, is to review the formal abatement or refund of taxes for Menards Inc. two thousand and sixteen tax year. We'll call on Mr. Lee.
Commissioner President, Commissioners, my name is Nick Lee. I'm the city assessor. Today you're hearing an abatement filed by Menards Incorporated that requests a $2.2 million reduction for their two thousand and sixteen assessed value. Typically, we ask, you know, the filers here that they go ahead and go first. So, we'll ask that now, if they have somebody here, they didn't mention that they're probably going to just do by writing, so. Here. Okay. Well, they submitted their stuff in writing, which I gave to you with your agenda packets. My synopsis of the submitted data is they provided thirty national sales of big box stores in order to prove big box stores are selling for low prices. What I didn't see in their data is how these locations relate to our area. I think it'd be safe to assume locations in which big box retailers are closing stores would require adjustment when compared to our thriving location. Assessed value was derived at using our value model, which is calibrated on local sales and is applied equitably to all properties in town. Additionally, I've submitted five comparable sales in our area which fully support our value. So, after reviewing the submitted information and reviewing our information on file, and doing an independent analysis, it's our recommendation that both applications be denied. If you have any questions, me, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Just have one, Nick. Just give us a little background. I know I've been here a long time. We do this every year for the new commissioners, kind of companies like this, what they do.
For abatements?
Yeah, as far as...
Now, if I can give you, okay, I'll go to abatements and Menards in particular. This isn't our first roadie with Menards. Abatements, basically, you have up to two years of, or one year of when the property's delinquent, so two years after they kind of build, to do a formal abatement. This is a first step in the hearing where we have the local board. We're actually given a recommendation of the county board. The county board is the final say, and then if they don't like that, then they can appeal it in district court. We also, early in the year, have had a local, county, and state board of equalization. That's the first kind of formal process. So, in this case, Menards didn't go to any of those for sixteen, seventeen, or eighteen, I don't believe either. They did for fifteen. That was the last time that they appealed. Now, this two thousand and sixteen, we are not unique. They filed across the state on the last date, everybody, and I can put that in your reading too, there. Coincidentally, most of them were twenty percent exactly reduction-esque, so they pretty much know what they want on this thing. Like I said, Menards is represented by Perdon Tax Group. Perdon does a lot of things in Minnesota, or they have tax court, which is a completely different process. Wisconsin, which, as I mentioned in your materials there, they've been getting a lot of traction on this dark store theory, and a lot of communities are being paying out a lot of money in refunds, I should say. So, you know, they're just trying it in every state they can, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
The other Commissioners, have any questions? Mr. Lee? Thank you very much.
Well, I think a motion to...
What is the pleasure of the commission with regard to the abatement of or refund of taxes for Menards?
Make a motion to leave it as it is, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Thorstedt, second. Been moved and seconded that the request to abate or refund taxes for Menards for the two thousand and sixteen tax year be denied. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Item number five in the regular agenda is to review the request to provide services for refunding bonds. Mr. Brian Osowski. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, President Artists, Commissioners. My name is Brian Osowski. I am president and majority owner of a company called Amco Advisors. We're a local municipal advising firm. We're independent, and we're registered with the SEC and the MSRB, which is required by federal law now when giving advice, financial advice, to political subdivisions like yourself. We are also independent, meaning that we have no affiliation with any underwriting firms, so that means that we are able to serve the best views of our clients, such as yourself. In the last, since May of two thousand and eighteen, the city of West Fargo had four bond issuances that were currently callable. In a normal process, what you would do is, at the time when those bonds, those bonds are becoming callable, you would start the process to evaluate if refunding those bonds, meaning refinancing them, would make sense to be able to save the issuer some money on that debt. Since May, actually, there's been two bond issuances that the city of West Fargo has done. One that closed on February first, two thousand and eighteen, that would have actually still qualified those bonds to be classified as currently, current refunded. And there was another that was closed on September fifth of this year. The one on February first was a refunding. The one on September fifth was new money. And so, but looking back, since those bonds has not, since those bonds have not been refinanced as of May first, and looking at the rates that the city received as September fifth, and what rates have done since then, we have estimated that this has probably cost the city over $678,000 in missed opportunity by not refunding those bonds. So, what we're asking to do is to take those bonds, act as the city's municipal advisor for this issue, for those refunding, those four bonds, and do those for the city. I think in your packet, you've seen, I've provided some background of what it would have looked like if the city would have refunded the bonds on September fifth as compared to where rates are at today. As you know, rates continue to increase. It does sound like the Federal Reserve is going to continue to increase interest rates, at least in December to, at this point. Going forward after that, you might see a little bit of where they might hold off, but definitely in December, it does sound like they're going to increase interest rates. So, we definitely would like the opportunity to work with the city with this refunding, and are looking for approval to do that. And I guess I'd ask for any questions that you might have.
Sure. Do you, sorry, Mike? Just had a quick one. Do you do most of your business now on Minnesota side, or...
No, that's a great question. Actually, we're in North Dakota. Most of our business is in North Dakota, working with cities, municipality, park districts, school districts, counties.
I just caught it because it's a city council or a city commission, so there's a difference.
Yes, and I apologize, I'm...
That's fine.
I did correct, but yes, I did. I apologize for putting city council.
That's fine. I was just, I just noticed it was interesting, that's all. Mr. Thorstedt?
Question for staff, I guess. I looked through it, and yes, they're showing savings if, obviously, if you can get that same bond rate, we wouldn't know until you got that bid out, but is he accurate in saying we do have these bonds that are eligible to be refinanced? And if so, I know in the past, we've refinanced, and was this on the staff's radar? Is this something we missed? Or maybe you can just give us a staff's report as to where we would be proceeding.
So, great question, Commissioner Thorstedt. I have three answers. So, number one, we're currently working with the city's current municipal advisor on preparing a refunding for these issues. The second is, we normally go through every year and look at issues that can be refunded. The third response, the prior finance director didn't necessarily agree with doing refinancing, and so we had flagged these up as potential bonds that could be refinanced, and I'll let Tina address what happened after we flagged them up.
Good evening, Commissioners. These are flagged up prior to the time that we did our bond issue, and we talked about advanced refinancing quite some time ago, and the prior director was not in favor of advanced refinancing. But then we discussed just doing a refinancing, saving on issuance costs, and so on and so forth. I directed him to go forward and work with our bond council to do the refinance, to save, to see what the savings would be, and at the end of the day, he wasn't comfortable, apparently, because he didn't include them in our bond issue.
So, we're currently reviewing these issues, and we actually have a couple. There was a recent IRS ruling dealing with some Build America bonds, and the city has a couple Build America bonds that we're currently in the process of preparing to refund those also. And so, the municipal advisor had decided that we're going to flag this issue up to the commission and probably bring it to the next commission meeting to get, go ahead. So, it was on our radar. I don't, I think Tina explained why we didn't do it earlier.
So, John, follow up with Commissioner Thorstedt's question. Just went out of my brain. I was going to, what did you ask at the beginning, Commissioner Thorstedt, again? First question you said to them?
I was just asking if they were aware of these and they had planned to take action on them.
Oh, there you go. My question was, so, you also mentioned that we don't necessarily know what the interest rate is until you put them in. So, how do you, how would we even compare something like that with this gentleman, or, you know?
So, you're correct. You don't know what the interest rate will be until you actually receive the bids. Typically, what you will do is you'll put a comparison of the existing debt service up to what the estimated debt service is, and then you'll analyze what the cost of issuance is, and then you have to come up with your present, net present value savings, and that'll tell you what your projected savings is. And you should have a window, a window of what you think that you'll get, what you want to get, and worst-case scenario, and at a minimum, it should, your analysis should show you what the minimum amount that you would save is. And that's the typical presentation that our municipal advisor would give you.
That's the same process that we do, is we actually bring bids forward. So, again, we don't work, we don't work with one underwriter. We go out and solicit bids. This might include a DORTY. This might include a Northland Securities Abaird, that we would actually go and ask to bid those bonds to bring back to the commission for consideration.
Mr. Shockley?
And that's the same process that we use. We are currently using DORTY as a municipal advisor, which excludes them from bidding upon the bonds. And so, we typically, because of the size of the sales, we do public sales, and therefore we have a municipal advisor, and they don't bid upon the bonds. The one exception of that was for the temporary financing, because we utilize them as an underwriter, and we're able to achieve a lower rate of interest. But the same process that the MA is doing, and they are obligated through the SEC and other regulations to follow that, and so they don't, they wouldn't bid on it, so. and other regulations to follow that, and so they don't, they wouldn't bid on it, so.
Any other questions, Mr. Osowski? Oh, I couldn't find it in here, and then I may have missed it, but there must be a fee for your services, right?
Correct, yes. So what we provided is a fee Schedule IV with Tina, the city administrator, for what that charge would be. And that's included. So when you look at the estimated, what we're estimating as a savings of approximately 1.3 million, that same as any previous process, those would be included in there.
Any other questions?
Yeah, John, how long have we been doing business with the Torcy?
Oh, well, since I started practicing. I work with, so full disclosure, I work with all municipal advisors, whether it's at Springstead, everybody. I think Dordy has been working with the city for probably 40 years or better. I mean, they, yeah, Tina said longer than she's been here, since, since you're the finance director, right? So they've been around with the city a long time. I, I guess I've never had any issues with Dordy doing it. They serve as a municipal advisor. They have a really competitive fee. It's significantly less than what was in the proposed documents. So I, it's up to the commission what, how you wanna proceed.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Osowski. Any other discussion? Are you, well, there's one or two things we can do. We can take it an action item on this based on the information that the gentleman provided us, or we could advise legal counsel and the city administrator to take it under consideration, and they come back with us with a recommendation as they move forward in December at the possibility of refinancing bonds. So I guess whatever's the pleasure of my fellow commissioner...
I'll make a, a motion that we just directed to our city attorney and city administrator to make that recommendation.
They're the experts, not us. Been moved and seconded, Commissioner Simmons. Commissioner Olson, second, to have the city administrator and legal counsel review the requests and proposals and get back to us on the next December meeting. Mr. Osowski, thank you very much for your time this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Oh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. My apologies. It has reached the six o'clock hour, so we're going to move back into the agenda, and we're going to go back to the public hearing for the liquor license revocation of Awake LLC. Mr. Shockley?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. Before you tonight, you have a hearing regarding the proposed revocation of Awake LLC license. We have had numerous noise complaints regarding the property. We received, as late as last night, another noise complaint and some other issues. Those have not been charged out, but we intend to charge those out. They're based upon the history of the noise violations, and especially based upon some of the reports that we received, initial reports that we received last night. I had serious concerns about whether or not this license holder was able to comply with the requirements of West Fargo's ordinances. That said, I didn't think that it rose to the level that it would be a permanent revocation, but I did, I am recommending that there be a 14-day suspension. And then as part of that suspension, so during the 14-day suspension, they would not be able to sell any alcohol at the establishment. And when the 14-day suspension would expire, there would be an understanding in the order that there would be no additional noise complaints. And if another noise complaint happened within the next 30 days following that 14 days, then we would bring it back for revocation. I, I can say that there's been a lot of violations on, on this license. And there was, last night, there was some concern about a Mr. O'Mahony not allowing or cooperating with the police department getting into the establishment, which is always one of my big concerns. And so my recommendation would be to suspend their license for a period of 14 days. The process is to open the public hearing, have the applicant and anybody else who's interested in providing testimony, have them provide their testimony, ask questions, close the public hearing, and then make your decision.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. Any questions of, Mr. Shockley from the commissioners? All right, we'll move out of the regular agenda and move into the public hearing for the liquor license revocation of Awake LLC for 14 days. Is there any public comment? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Rochelle Bowe, my personal address or the business address?
Your personal address.
Okay, for...
And a business address, both.
Both of them, okay. 1410th, 9th Street East, West Fargo, Suite 501 is the business. And then mine says 20, sorry, I gotta confuse, 4021, 19th Avenue South, Fargo, Apartment 101.
Thank you.
I was coming here today, 'cause we, it's been a series of time where the noise did stop. We have done several different things, complying from the last time I stood before you guys. The noise complaint did cease now. However, lately, we have been getting that continuously noise complaint. When I first noticed, I did call, I did call him, and he said that the situation is that when we go outside, we cannot physically hear the noise. However, when they're in their home, they can still hear it. So that's kinda like hard to determine if the noise retired or not, if I'm not hearing it outside, but they're hearing it in their home. As of now, I spent up to $6,000 renovating, soundproofing from when I was here. And I also took all the speakers from, in the entire bar, down and moved it away from any windows or walls area, just so I could comply. I've always worked hand in hand with the officer. There has not been any type of pushback whenever they come in. But with that particular situation where they can hear in their home, and we can't hear when we stand to the fence or anywhere else, it's kinda hard to determine anything. 'Cause I, like I said, I have been trying my best, my possible best. And it is to the point where I've gotten in touch with my, my landlord, and we're trying to move altogether. We're not even trying. I'm like trying my possible best to where the location itself is one cell. They're not trying to get us out of our lease, and there's no way I could barely be paying rent over there and move to another location financially. It will break me down. So she put the place up for lease right now, and we're just praying to God that somebody can at least just rent it. And I went and I did pull up some research, and it is, it looks like it has been in the past nine complaints from divas and rock stars and other things. And I told her that was something they were supposed to disclose with me prior to like me getting that location or anything. But like, we're here now, and there's nothing that we can do besides try to find a suggestion to move forward. And that is moving from that particular location. I don't know what you guys could do in helping us move that from that location, but I don't wanna be there anymore. I, I'm working on, I have put the location everywhere just so somebody else can rent it out. I don't know if they're gonna use that as a bar when someone rents it out. I told her the main concern is the music, so maybe a bar in that particular location wouldn't do any justice for anyone. But we are looking for ways to move from that particular location.
Thank you, Rochelle. Is there any questions of the lady? Is there any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? Sir? Please, please step to the microphone and introduce yourself and your address, please.
My name is Dana Mahoney, 3414 Eagle Run Lane, West Fargo.
Thank you, sir.
And I was at the bar last night when officers had come in. As of all, according to Mr. Shockley, that we didn't allow them in the building. They came in the building without even showing any identification whatsoever. So nobody ever stopped them from coming to the building to make sure the sound level is good. They wanted to talk to me outside, so I went outside with them, and then I had a conversation with them. Everything was done. My biggest concern with the area is, according to Rich, the zoning department allowed it to be a bar and a lounge. I don't know why it's so close to a residential area that it's gonna be causing this much issue. So if they've zoned a place for a bar, which mo- majority of the people know that a bar will consist of music and drinking and whatnot, some disturbances are mostly all on any bars here in town. I don't know why the zoning department will make that particular location available for a club or a bar, knowing that there's residential places right next door to it. So that is not doing justice for whoever's gonna rent the place going forward and whoever is there right now. So that's something that I would like anybody here that could talk to the zoning department to either change that whole area from being a business area to somehow residential so then the next person doesn't go through what we are going through here within the last six months. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
I, I'm sorry, may I, I have one question for him, just curious, the, the officer, you said you talked to the officer last night?
Yes, I did.
Was he wearing a uniform?
There were six officers that came there.
Okay, so that wasn't enough proof for you that they were...
There was security at the front door.
Yeah.
I was inside. They came in. I saw them coming, so I asked them, is there anything we can help you with? Said that music is loud. They turned the music down. And this wasn't my, they said that I wouldn't allow them in the building. I wasn't at the door. Security was at the door. Security gave me a report after they left. So to say my name and say that I would not allow them in the building, that's wrong, because I wasn't at the door. I was inside. How they got to me was I was inside the building, so I just wanted to make that statement clear.
Okay, I get that. I understand now what you're saying. I was, I wanted to clear that up.
Yeah. I mean, I told security, anytime law enforcement come, you don't have to check ID, just let them in right away. To make that statement that I did not allow them in or I was causing an issue, that, that was never the case.
Okay, that, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Is there any other public comment? Yes, ma'am. Please join us up front. Please state your name and address.
Denise Morrison, 1414 Heatherwood Court.
Welcome.
Thank you. My front yard faces the back door of the bar. I am probably 50 feet away. I can hear the music outside. All you have to do is step on my patio. I've spent some hours out there with the police officers. It kinda comes through the, the break between the two shopping malls there. I could've called twice this weekend. The night before was even worse, but it started later. We called the police, they come, and most often, nothing changes till closing. The night before, after closing, employees came out the back door talking. I was laying in bed. I could hear this talking, and it's very close. So I went to the window and looked out. There were two employees that went in and out three or four times, taking trash. When they dumped their bottles that night, if you're sleeping, you wake up. I, I personally think this is a very poor location for a bar. I was hopeful it never would happen again. I realize this is their business, and they have an investment. But I also have an investment. It's called my health. I, I did not move. I did not purchase a business. I did not lease a business. And I did not issue a liquor license. So you would think, not my problem. But it is my problem. And I've made it the police department's problem. And they have been very, very nice and very, very kind. My hope would be that these business people can find another location. They're entitled to have a business. I just don't want it in my front yard. Nor do I want another bar in my front yard.
Any questions of the lady?
Thank you.
Thank you kindly. Is there any other public comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. We'll move back to the item in the regular agenda to review the liquor license revocation of Awake LLC for 14 days. What is the pleasure of the...
I have a question, John, if I may, thank you. John, I'm, I'm very concerned, I guess. I think this is last night, one, the one we have with the, the three ladies in there?
Yes.
Are you taking that into consideration when you recommend that 14 days? 'Cause to me, this seems pretty, I guess, obviously we have a violation against that, do we not?
I'm gonna let the chief comment on that one. Are you familiar with last night's police report?
Evening, gentlemen and commissioners. Familiar with last night's report? While it was suspicious behavior, there would need to be further investigation at this point to, to show there's a criminal violation of what occurred. But it was enough that it jumped out to the officer that he, he put it in his report. But again, showing an actual criminal violation would be premature at this time.
Do the owners know about that, or will be told that, so for future reference, they understand that?
I'm sure, if they have been or not.
They can ask, I guess.
Yeah.
They can ask for a copy of the report.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
But it's a pleasure of the commission.
I will make a motion to go by the recommendation of our city attorney and suspend the license for 14 days. Is that correct, John?
Yeah, and that would be commencing tomorrow night at 11:59 PM. So they wouldn't be able to serve alcohol after midnight tomorrow night for a period of 14 days.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Shockley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Thorsted. It's been moved and seconded that the liquor license revocation for the Awake LLC for 14 days, starting at 11:59 November 18th?
20th tomorrow.
I'll, I'll be all right. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next order of business is to review the tab, bid tab, for the street improvement District 2250, Segment 3. Mr. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Commission President Artis and members of the commission. In your packet, you have the bid information, but if you allow me a couple minutes, I just wanna go over some supplemental information, just a brief overview of the project. Start with a, a map. So District 2250 is comprised of two segments of Cheyenne Street. Segment 2, which we just went under construction this, this past season, which is from Beaton Drive down to 32nd Avenue. And also Segment 3, which is from 32nd Avenue to 40th Avenue. Segment 1, to the north of that, is a separate assessment district. So it's referred to as Improvement District 2249. So the, the reason why I wanted to briefly touch on this is just to clarify that when we are talking, the, the bids and the improvements for District 2250 is specifically Segments 2 and 3, and it excludes the majority of the interchange work. There is a small portion of city funds that are with, tied with that interchange. It's for the stormwater improvements with that interchange. So again, I just, I just wanted to make sure that the commission is fully familiar with the improvement district or the assessment district, if you will, which the second map I wanna bring up is the assessment district boundary. Again, this, so this assessment district was created in 2017. So part of the reason why I wanted to do this brief overview is we have some new commissioners that weren't around when, when the previous commission created this district. So forgive me... So, uh, forgive me, the, uh, clarity here is not real good, uh, but for the most part, the, uh, the assessment district boundary extends south of I-94 and includes, uh, all of the properties within the city limits, uh, basically from this, uh, here's Fifty-second Avenue, so West Fargo city limits extend, um, about a half a mile south of Fifty-second here. Um, this portion to the right here is Horace. The boundary, uh, basically goes over to Veterans Boulevard, up to Interstate Ninety-four, back down and around along the, uh, West Fargo diversion channel. So, a large, uh, assessment district, it is, uh, typical of what we've done the past few years when we are doing these large arterial, uh, street improvements. So Thirty-second and Fortieth Avenues, east and west, uh, each, uh, had a similar or the exact same assessment district boundary.
So Dustin, while you're showing that and talking about that, I know, obviously, we all know we've had some concerns, some issues with some of those areas. Is there something that we're gonna do different this time than we did, at least to make sure they're all notified, they all got opportunity to speak? We, we just come out of this and we're going right back into it again.
Good question. Um, so with, with Cheyenne Street, uh, it's been a relatively long process of, uh, going through corridor studies, which started in twenty fourteen. Um, we had a lot of public involvement with that. Then we proceeded into the environmental, uh, phase, which is, um, basically going through a, a whole nother realm of public involvement, identifying alternatives to the, uh, projects. Um, and through these public involvement, um, proceedings, we've always provided, uh, an estimated, uh, cost for assessments. Um, and then, uh, more recently, uh, well, at, last year, uh, we did have, uh, some open houses and public meetings where, uh, we had more definitive cost estimates, so we were, um, able to pass on a more detailed or, or precise estimate of specials, which I believe is about twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, per single family resident. So there has been, I would call it, uh, more, uh, public engagement with this particular project, partly because of the, uh, um, use of federal funding. We are required to go through certain, uh, steps, which, again, starts with corridor study, then into the environmental document phase, and then into the, uh, the preliminary design and final design. So, uh...
So maybe this is a better question, Dustin, for John to answer. Do you, do you feel, John, that we've done enough notifications, that we've done what we needed to do, so we don't get in the same pickle that we were in just a couple weeks ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanna make, you know what I'm saying? I, I mean, I wanna make sure they all know about it, they should, but have we done our due diligence here, I guess I have?
Yeah, so, again, great question. We are in a much different spot than we were with Forty-Sixty, so we have not even started the assessment process. So this district was, uh, created with a resolution of necessity and notices went out for the creation of the district and the public hearing. Uh, when we move to the assessment process, that should be after, well, after we've conducted the forums to gather what type of notification people would want regarding what their proposed assessment would be. So, uh, it'll probably be two thousand twenty when we start assessing this district, and so we have sufficient time, uh, to figure out what that notification, the property owner should be about what their assessment will be. So, uh, from a notice standpoint, we've noticed people that this district was created, uh, there was a resolution of necessity that was required, a public hearing was held on it, so it's really a matter, and going forward of whatever the commission comes up with for notices regarding what somebody is gonna be assessed, whether that's a letter directly to each property owner, whatever comes out of those different forms.
Which was how we, uh, notified the assessment district of the, the resolution of necessity public hearing. Individual letters went to each property, um, specifically to inform them that there was, uh, a public hearing with time and date that was, and the purpose of it was for them to protest the creation of an assessment district. Thank you. Okay, so as we, um, started this process back in twenty seventeen, uh, it was at the meeting, at the city commission meeting on October sixteenth, where we reviewed the, uh, engineer's report and, uh, the, uh, corresponding engineer's opinion of probable cost. And the reason I bring this up is, uh, when we, uh, review bids, one of the things we need to do is compare it to the, uh, approved engineer's opinion of cost, uh, because there is a limitation on, uh, how much, uh, difference can be from a bid and what was, uh, accepted as an estimate. So, uh, for example, the century code, uh, restricts us from proceeding with a bid, um, if we are forty percent higher, uh, than what was the original engineer's estimate. So now, moving into the, uh, the bids themselves for, uh, Segment Three here, uh, this information you do have in your packet. Uh, on November ninth, the Department of Transportation did open bids for this, uh, third segment, again, Thirty-second Avenue to Fortieth Avenue. And we had three bidders. And here again, it's, it's a little difficult to see, but, uh, just a quick summary of, of the bid results. Dakota Underground Company, uh, was the lowest bidder of, uh, three that submitted. Their bid was, uh, less than a percent, uh, under our original engineer's estimate that was dated back in October of, of twenty seventeen, so very close. Uh, the engineer's most recent estimate that was advertised with the bids, uh, was just seven percent over. And then the, uh, second and, and third bidders were, uh, twelve percent and twenty-two percent higher than the low bidder, Dakota Underground. We had asked the, uh, consulting engineer to, uh, review the bid real, the bid results and provide a recommendation. Um, as you see in your packet, they have, uh, recommended to award the contract and ask that the, the Department of Transportation, uh, proceed with, uh, award on their end in preparing, uh, the final construction contract. So, um, with that, I will, uh, conclude by recommending that the city commission, uh, award the contract to Dakota Underground in the amount of ten million dollars, for ten million, eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. With that, I can answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Scott? Thank you, Mr. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I'm a motion to approve the bid for ten million, eighty-three thousand, seven seventy-seven, eighty-five.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Jurdabek. It's been moved and seconded to approve the bid for, as outlined by Mr. Scott.
My only public comment would be that, as we move forward with any of these major special assessment districts, and I wanna be respectful of Mr. Shockley when I say that, uh, I don't want these notifications just to be, that they qualify legally by what legal precedent is, or what legal, uh, century code demands. I think that as the city commission and as commissioners of the city of West Fargo, we owe it to our public to go beyond that. So rather than the bare minimum, I think that, uh, and I know that we've, uh, we've got a new site, uh, or, uh, information on our website with regard to special assessments, and I would encourage all department heads that are engaged in this, elements of this, that we continue to do more for the public rather than less.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is item number seven, our city administrators' report. This is Fisk.
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, I have a few things for you today, but I wanna start out by, um, explaining to you what we've been doing at City Hall. We've been talking a lot about management training and supervisor training and trying to get our staff, um, more in tune with what it is we need to do. What we've been doing in the past is we've been taking and promoting people from within at times to leadership positions that they may not have always been ready for and just needed some training for. Um, but recently, we actually had one of our department heads start the Dale Carnegie Training Course in Leadership, and as part of that course, it's not complete yet, there is a spot in there where the people of your group get together in this leadership training for managers and give an application award to one individual. It's voted on by the peers that are in your group with you, and it's, it's a very telling award, because these are people from all different areas that, that know all different things, and so they can see in you that you're, that you really are a good leader and you're working towards being a good leader. Um, it reflects favorably, favorably, not only on the individual, but it reflects, reflects favorably on, when I can talk, on the city of West Fargo. Um, so at this time, I want to have Chris Brungard come up here. And it said, "This award is awarded to an individual who demonstrates by content and delivery the results of a commitment made, as well as advanced shared, advanced share demonstrates careful participation. Congratulations on your achievement to strengthen your personal and professional skills." Through this course, it's rather interesting, Chris has made a lot of really, he's done a lot of different meetings with his managers, um, he's kind of pulled them outside their comfort zone and asked some questions outside the box, and he's been, it's, some of the things he's been coming up with are really exciting, so they're things that, you know, as we go forward, we might implement among other departments and, and get more people up to speed, so that we can continue to grow our staff, to always feel like they're empowered to do everything they need to do for our community. So, with that being said, I will get into my other items. Um, Bernie had forwarded to me that the Cass County Planning Commission appointee that we have right now, currently Brad Olson, that that position expires on December thirty-first of this year, and so they are requesting another appointment. And that is a...
Mr. Olson, are you willing to serve?
Sure. Thank you.
I'll just need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion, real quick. Sir, second.
(laughing). Superb.
There was a mad rush for a second, so we have, we have a motion and a second, that Commissioner Olson be planted, uh, be, reappointed to the planning comi- County Planning Commission. We are it. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You notice I didn't ask for any discussion.
I like how Brad looked over when he said opposed.
That's like getting fired at fish camp.
The next question I have for you is, we had had that joint city, park, school meeting, and after that, we had other discussions, just a few of us talked, and I talked with the school, and I talked with the park, and we've talked about having a smaller meeting. Just a couple of representatives from each of our boards and just some, the executive staff sit in a room and talk through some more issues. And so we're looking at trying to set up a meeting for between Thanksgiving and Christmas for the small group, and I was wondering who of you would be interested in participating?
I would.
I would.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you very much. Um, so I will shoot dates out to you once I hear back from Barb and from the schools as well. This Friday, the, whatever, this Thursday, of course, not Friday, this Thursday, we are closed, but we are open on Friday. We'll have, um, minimal staff, but we will be open and operating and being able to serve the public, so that, so that is, I think the city of Fargo closes for Friday, but we don't. So, um, November twenty-eighth, from seven to eight-thirty, the Cheney Middle School is having an, an open house type invitational meeting to talk about the future of the schools. Um, for those of you that haven't signed up, if you need to get signed up and you don't have the link, Lot of Snow will help you out. Um, but otherwise, you just need to let them know at the school that you'll be attending and they'll mark you down. The More Engineering Christmas Party is set for December twelfth, you should've all gotten a card in the mail. That's always really a lot of fun. But even more fun than that, the City Employee Christmas Party is December seventh, and all of you will be getting invitations if you haven't already. Um, it's usually a lot of fun, we get, um, we have door prizes and things like that for employees, and they really like it, and that's always held at the home with sweets, so that's really a lot of fun. Courtney's group has been working extremely hard on all these different events for the employees, and they've done a really good job this year of getting things going, and I'm excited for them to see more things get done to remind employees that they are appreciated on a regular basis. Beyond that, on December fourth and fifth, I will be in Bismarck. I believe Matt will be in Bismarck on the fifth, and Bernie will also be in Bismarck on the fifth. The fourth, I have an executive legal cities board meeting, and the fifth is the biennial legislative workshop. So if any of you are interested in going to that on the fifth, um, let me know, and I can get you signed up as well. And that takes care of my list for today. Thank you very much.
In addition, on December fifth, while we're in Bismarck, uh, Governor Bergen will present his budget for the biennial. It's the same day.
That should be popular. Thank you.
Is there anything for, just please, Mr.
Just so you know, um, I'm, I'm on the MetroCOC, which is the Council of Governments between, and it's a rotating appointment of, uh, chairman and vice chairman and all that, and it's West Fargo's turn to be, uh, vice chair. So I got elected to that too, last week, so I will serve as the vice chair for this upcoming year of MetroCOC.
Former chief of police, Arlen Rasmussen, county commissioner, just came off, and Jenny Monteg, better?
Jenny, yep.
Yeah, is the, uh, Clay, I can't say her last name, I guess. Clay County, uh, commissioner is the chairman, and then Brad will be the, the next chairman. Anything else for the good of the order? One other item that took place last week, uh, in conjunction with the West Fargo Public Schools and the West Fargo Police Department and other, uh, law enforcement agencies, counselors, uh, probation officers, uh, there was a wonderful, uh, public engagement forum on the opioid and drug problem that, uh, is throughout America and certainly throughout our communities. And I wanted to commend, uh, we had a number of police officers that presented, uh, a number of, uh, West Fargo, uh, Public Schools counselors and administrators, and it was a great meeting, uh, raising the public's awareness of the issues that are at hand with our young people and the opioid crisis as a whole, which isn't only affecting the young people, but, uh, absolute kudos to the West Fargo PD and working hand in hand with the, uh, school district and all the other agencies. Great job, great job. Anything else for the good of the order? An entertaining motion to adjourn.
Agreed.
Moved by Commissioner Olson, seconded by Commissioner Jurdabek, then moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you for coming, thank you for joining us this evening.